Let it record reflect that a quorum is present. This time I'm going to ask Commissioner Thurman if he would give the indication.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we come before you this morning with a humble heart. We praise you and thank you for this day. Thank you for your blessings, your love and mercy. We ask you now to just guide our minds and consciences today and help us to do the right thing with the county. I pray you bless our county, let it go forth and just prosper in you, I pray. And may we do the right things in the right way, in Jesus' name. Lord, I pray you bless every one of these men and these ladies on this panel today, touch us and guide us and lead us, I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Would you join me in the celebration?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here today. We want to welcome everybody here today and we welcome the news media. If we have someone here for that, we always appreciate interest in county government. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the official agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the official agenda.
Sir.
Have a motion and second to adopt the official agenda as any other comments. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we'll hear from Mr. Dennis Meeks.
Aye, sure. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Um, I get, y'all have probably been getting emails just like I have. Uh, but I received an email last Saturday from the folks that's, uh, working over on the jail. Uh, they only got, uh, one thing left and that was, uh, something to do with the, uh, uh, duck smoke work by our alarm system and all that. Uh, their last email reflects that they'll be here next Monday to start this work. Uh, they say they hope that they can, uh, get through with one day, but it's gonna be, you know, two at the most. So it's gonna be fairly quick and, uh, and then we'll be set up, uh, for a final inspection and ready to move in. Having said that, uh, a couple of years ago, when, you know, we started talking about, uh, a new addition and we was getting started because it has taken a while to get this done. Uh, I was asked, well, how many additional, uh, COs, female COs, did we think it's gonna need to, uh, take care of that addition? And at that time, uh, we figured it was gonna take about three additions. Uh, so, um, we were halfway through, the budget year almost halfway through. Uh, so we're only looking at, you know, ha- half a budget year, uh, to go. But at this time, with us being this close, uh, uh, in the, uh, final stages of getting the addition completed, uh, and final inspection will be just around the corner and it will take a little while for us to, uh, get some applications in, to do those interviews and actually get somebody hired. Uh, I'm requesting this morning that, uh, y'all would approve us to start taking applications for female matrons, uh, for the new addition of the jail. So I'd say it will take a little while to even get those, that process complete.
Until we get finally accepted, we can't hire anybody. And, uh, also I've talked to Mr. Kennedy about going in and, uh, cleaning up the old women's session and paint and this kind of stuff. Get it back in good shape before we, when everybody's moving out, we'll have an opportunity to do maintenance in there at that time.
Now, I'm not talking about maintenance in the old part.
I'm talking about in the women's old part.
Well, you was talking about get, taking applications and, uh...
I'm just saying from the timetable standpoint. If we have to do any repair...
Man- man- maintenance and paint and painting and repairs, it, it has nothing to do with what I'm asking.
Right, I understand.
For the old jail.
You just wanna fill your per- you, how to get your personnel in place to, to be ready to go.
Yeah, and it's gonna take a, it's gonna take a little while to do that. And so I don't, you know, if we wait till, okay, if we're gonna move in today, well, then we start taking applications, we're, we're, then we're a month, we're still a month behind.
I, I think you've already utilized one of those slots in the old jail.
Do you, do you talk, how many are you talking about, sir? How many figures I'm at now, two or three?
Three.
Three.
That's what, that's what they talk about really.
Do you know what the manpower?
I looked, I looked it up last week and the manpower was twenty-three and when he asked for additional, it was changed to twenty-six. And the last manning chart I received had twenty-four people employed at this time. So that only leaves the two spaces.
It only leaves two spaces.
We can double check and make sure that...
I'm gonna do three because that's, that's, that would give me eight women, which is only two on each shift. And Ms. Benson, who's a sergeant to oversee it. So that is only gonna have me two females per shift.
With some twelve-hour shifts.
Yes, sir.
That will require y'all to make a change in the manning chart as well if that...
What if we go ahead and do the two and then change the manning chart if we need to on the next meeting? Would that give, that be spot of use here? Go and approve the two that we got open now without having to change a manpower chart? And then, I guess, our next meeting or which won't be as, be beginning next month? And we go ahead and work those fill in that spot or see how, go and get together and work that out. That's fine?
I suggest you, uh, look at a- applications and, and, uh, select three and then we'll settle the issue whether we want to hire two with three.
Okay. And then, and that's, that's all we're asking this morning, that we're allowed to start taking...
And do the three.
Uh, app- application.
I don't, I don't...
I don't think ever, our motions is already...
I don't think we have to do any, um, uh, action on that, just what we must all advertise and, and take, take the applications.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Are you gonna, Ms. Harris might wanna comment during this time?
Who?
Ms. Harris might wanna comment during this time.
Where?
Well, we can do it later, I'm gonna, I'm getting ahead of myself.
She's not a public official. Okay. Okay, uh...
What did we do here?
We just let...
Now, he requested what? And we didn't, we give him power to do what? Have we voted on it?
I don't think we have to, he's...
We don't have to?
Yeah, right. He's gonna take application, but they won't be hired until we, uh, approve the number of slots, is that right?
Turn him loose. Let him hard, let him get them.
There's currently two spaces are available, so only two spaces will be filled up until young...
You go out to help.
Maybe we go out and do some changes and that's when it will be. At this time, I have, uh, comments from, uh, Mr. Eddie Stacy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think y'all have received my letter of resignation from the Cody County Board.
But we didn't accept it.
You didn't. Uh, I want to just tell everybody I appreciate the last twenty-something years that I've served on it from all administrations and everything. And, uh, I'm gonna tell you, this group right here has done more than, than a lot of people have done and I do appreciate it. I have recommended Mr. Shane Cook, uh, to take my place. I wrote him a letter of recommendation and, uh, I'd like for y'all to consider him as an appointee. And basically, that's all I got and I just wanna say that I want to go individually, I appreciate it. And I will let you know that the, uh, county, uh, do have two state tournaments coming this year. They got the nine-year-old state coming the end of June and they got the thirteen-year-old state coming at the first of July. And the county was awarded the two thousand and eighteen fifteen-year-old Southwest Regents. So, and everything, but...
Hardworking, we appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate y'all. Without y'all, we couldn't be where we're at today.
Well, you've done a good job of bringing people into the county and I've heard a lot of positive comments about it and I appreciate what you've done.
Well, I understand our numbers are up, even higher this year.
I think it's still gonna need you to...
Our teams are up by five, no, about five new teams this year. We got five additional teams this year. So we're gonna push six hundred kids this year.
Yes, you gonna stay on kinda and help them out if you can.
I'll be there too. If they have a tournament and they need help, I'll be there for them.
Thank you, sir.
Eddie, we appreciate the way everything has flowed. I mean, you couldn't ask for things and, and we all look back to you and, and thank you for that. Because it seemed like it's been coordinated and everything went. And I know you had tireless hours of doing this and we appreciate it.
Well, if you look at it, it's all about the kids. It ain't about the parents, it ain't about the coaches, it's about those kids. That's what it's about.
I'd like to commend you on the job you've done in the previous years since I've been here eleven years, a little over, going twelve and Eddie. And I knew you were crop insurance and insurance was bought from you years before that and always been easy to work with. And the thing about you, you didn't have a young dog in, excuse me, a dog in the hunt. You didn't have a young that I, I played and you'd work mighty hard.
I appreciate that.
And I, I appreciate it and you're gonna be hard to replace.
Well, that's where I was going when I lived here. I got one week left to get all my paperwork here for my crop insurance. It's due the twenty-eighth.
Thank you for what you've done over the years.
Well, I thank y'all, y'all, I appreciate it.
We gonna miss you.
Thank you for your service, I'm gonna take your recommendation under advisement.
Okay, I appreciate it. So I'm off?
You're off.
Okay.
I thought you got to leave a check first.
I put it in the mail, sir.
There you go.
Yeah, I put it in the mail, sir.
Okay.
Familiar, Mr. Stacy.
At this time, I'll call on Ms. Robin Kirby, who is asked to address the commission at this time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all today?
Fine, young lady, how are you?
Just fine. I, I'm having a little bit of problem. Uh, my son and his ex-wife gets back together and gets going fine and then they have problems. And she calls the law, the law gets called. And on November, I mean, on February fourth, he was arrested. Uh, on November, I mean, February third, he was arrested. On the, uh, February fourth, approximately between seven and seven-thirty, I'm in my living room and I think I see lights coming down my driveway. I walk to my door and I don't see any lights. Uh, I decide to step outside. I still don't see anything. Uh, I turn to go back in and I see a flashlight. So I step out further in my, on my porch and I see a SUV, which is the Sheriff's Department. And I ask them, I say, what are y'all doing? I have two walkways to my front door, one in front of my house and one beside my house. Uh, the law officer says, oh, I'm coming to your door. I said, that's fine. I said, may I ask what, I have a warrant. I said, a warrant for what? For Houston Kirby. And I said, for what? He said, oh, I don't know, I don't have the warrant with me. Uh, I tell him, you know, that Houston doesn't live here, he has a house on the dirt road. Uh, yes, he has an address at my house because he doesn't know the address over there. We sit there and talk, real nice, never introduced himself. My dog wanders through the neighborhood all the time. My dog comes up from the road, uh, he's jumping on the officer. But I tell the officer, I, you know, we got a train because we have a grandbaby. And he, uh, when he jumps on her, he just picks up a stick and he said, oh, no, I'm not gonna do that. Well, my dog takes off running to the back of the house. At this time, the law officer that I'm talking to does not inform me there's two more around the back of my house. Uh, we walk around there and they are with flashlights in my car, looking through my car with flashlights. I, I say, what's going on? One of them comes up to me and says, you do not have to be so rude. I said, that's my car. He says, I didn't know that. I said, it's in my driveway. I still didn't know that. I tell him to run the tag. He says, well, we banged on your back door. I said, first of all, you don't bang on my door. Second of all, you come to my front door. You don't go to my back door. Uh, there's no light in my backyard at night. It's in my front yard. Okay? You know, they ask me questions, I told them. I said, I've already told the officer, I don't know where he is. We have rental houses in town. I've been working on rental houses for the last two months in town. Uh, one of the officer kinda got ugly and I, I tell him, I say, look, I've already told y'all, he's not here, y'all can leave. Uh, they get in their car and they leave. I call nine-one-one and I discuss it with them. Well, the officer calls me back and he says, I, you know, I'm sorry. Come to find out, I said, well, you know, out of thirty years that I've lived at my house, I've never been scared to leave my windows, my curtains up. I said, for me to have to worry about people sneaking around my house with flashlights is ridiculous. Okay? February seventh, I'm in the bed at ten o'clock at night. My dogs go to bark. I brush it off as a deer because I live in the woods. Uh, they continue to bark. So I get to my window in my bedroom and look up outside. Two vehicle parked on the road atop my driveway. One facing way, one facing the... That week, my husband worked nuclear plants and he saw a lot. Uh, then I came in, he taught, he taught me how to shoot a gun. I've never shot a gun in my life. He taught me how to shoot a gun. Well, I, I tried to shoot it because I don't know who it is. I don't have the lights on. What do they, they turned the lights, they come flying out of the road. Come to my front door. I'm standing on the door, this time I pull my mask, they pull, I can see them. They come to my, one of them says, did you shoot? I said, it's ten o'clock at night. My dog is in my house. I'm by myself. Says, did you, you want to go to prison for life? I said, I didn't shoot towards you, I shot in my yard. I had that right. He says, we have the right to sit on the road. I said, I understand that. I said, but could you sit somewhere besides right there in my dog, in my, by my house, in front of my house where my dogs bark? We have the right wherever we want. Okay? Uh, two of the officers walked around, I believe they had no rights. He came around, well, keep walking, I'll tell you what, I'll call nine-one-one. When I said nine-one-one. And I said, let me put it this way, Eddie. They just stabilized, I'm fine with nine-one-one, take off. My son, be in trouble? I know, this is not the case. Y'all still telling me that they have one either, their big, especially call me today if I heard. No. I've been in trouble, don't plan on being in trouble. My kids, yes, have. I've been a lot, there's other kids out there that's too. For y'all time at my house at ten o'clock at night. What's the issue today? This warrant was issued at three ten. They waited until night to come. Why? Now, i- it's uncalled for, I'm tired of it. This is harassment on my part, my house. I, I'm not having it anymore. Do they come when my husband's home? No. They wait. I, I'm sick of it. Y'all can do something or I can do it. But it's not that hurt you. I, 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 I'm calling to the sheriff's office. I think I have been to your office before.
You've been to my office at one time in nine years. But I've been in, that I've been here.
No, I've been here twice.
Twice in nine years.
Well, thank you.
Have you been to the sheriff's office? You knew you could, that'd be my office, not in front of the county.
So you're telling me your officers never mentioned this to you? We're still working with different, um, families, trying to get them the help that they need. But, um, we did have, um, the National Weather Service on the northwest corner in the Pigeon Creek. They did classify that as a tornado. And then, uh, the strong area, uh, with straight line winds, uh, winds of eighty miles, which is still major damage in that area. So, um, again, uh, we just preached everyone to be prepared. Um, March next month is our actual, our peak season for tornadoes. And, um, tomorrow night, uh, to the next morning, we're expecting another storm in November. So that's why. The middle of the night, so really putting your whole, the red. Tonight, I feel like, um, this is the time to be prepared, but you're not prepared.
Morning, commissioners, chairman.
Morning.
My name's Cole Robertson with GMC. We'd like to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to finish this update for the solid waste management plan. It's a ten year update, so it's good through twenty twenty five. Uh, there were no significant changes from the last update.
I assume all of them.
Yeah, just through, uh, just, just. Get it done first and just in the day, make sure.
Uh, public here, we not having this. Yeah, thank you very much.
Need to make a motion to.
Thank you, sir.
We had one item of old business from our last meeting. That was the approval of the minutes for the January thirteenth, two thousand sixteen regular meeting. Do I have a motion that we approve them?
I saw move them to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second? We have a motion second. Are any comments regarding the minutes? If there be none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be none, motion carried unanimously. Question carried unanimously. Going into new business, we have an approval of the minutes from our February the sixteenth, two thousand sixteen special meeting. We've had those. Do I have a motion that we approve those?
So move.
Second. We have a motion to second, approve the minutes of the special meeting. Any other comments? There be none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be none, motion carried unanimously. Next item is consider board appointments for county and recreation board. I feel like we need to do this in two different things. Mister Stacy resigned as of nineteenth of, uh, February.
Mm-hmm.
Can, back to the minutes. Did you get both meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We did the regular meeting and then we came down and did the special.
Okay.
You need to know who made the motion and say?
I've got it, I think. Thank you.
Okay. Since Mister Stacy resigned before his terms up, I think it'd be appropriate that we have a motion that. Whoever his, uh, fills his slot, that he be appointed for the duration of this term. And if you so desire, in the same motion, you can move that he be, the person be approved for a new term.
You talking about to continue, uh, complete Mister Stacy's term and to serve in that position after that time?
Yes, yes. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I'll make the motion, Mister Cook, to finish out Mister Stacy's term or his old term and reappoint him for, permanently for four more years on another vote.
It's two years.
Two years, what, two years then, Mister Cook?
Do I have a second to that?
You have a second.
Do we have a motion in the second? Any comments? There be none. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be none, motion carried unanimously. Now, we will take up the, and, uh, the other two, um, positions on the reg board, which is currently held by Mister Wayne Bush. And Mister Sermon and their, their term ends the tip of March. This is the only two that we have that is applied. Is that correct, Miss Sowell?
That's right.
I'm making the motion that we reappoint Mister Sermon and Mister Bush at those positions.
I'll second that.
We got a motion in the second to reappoint Mister Bush and Mister Sermon to a two-year term on the recreation board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. At this time, we'll take up for consideration a resolution approving the county solid waste plan. Mister Robertson has already presented that, so it's the pleasure of, of the, uh, commission.
I have, make a motion, we accept this solid waste plan. Second.
We got a motion in second to approve the resolution to accept the county solid waste plan. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, this is something we do every year. It's considered annual tax levy for fiscal year seventeen. Miss Sowell, calling you to come in on that.
Uh, yes, sir. We had the special election last year that just kinda held everything in the same place that it was. So this is the same, uh, millage rates that we've had for quite some time now. And you can see on seven, page seven, that is the, uh, each one broken down.
Do I have a motion that we, uh, levy the taxes at the current rates?
So move.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve the, uh, levy the taxes at the same rate as prior. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be none, motion carried unanimously. Now, uh, next is consider amending point A lease. Miss, uh, Brooks is not here with us, but she's been in conversation with Miss Sowell and she will handle this matter at this time.
Uh, basically, we have a release of guarantee, personal guarantee, uh, from Mister Watson and there's been a transaction that has changed the ownership of that, uh, company. And so we were wanting to have this paperwork prepared once we have the documents needed to show the transaction. And, uh, so we were wanting to release Mister Watson's at the time that we were able to, uh, get a personal guarantee on Mister Johnson. So it would be done pending the, uh, documentation, swapping Mister Johnson over, and then we'll release Mister Watson.
So we need a motion to release Mister Watson from his guarantee pending. The signing of Mister Johnson to replace him as a guarantee for that cut. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm making motion to, uh, release Mister Watson, his guarantee, and then add Mister Johnson to it. The chairman says wants to sign the lease and everything agreement.
Second.
We got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Uh. The motion carried unanimously. The next item is consider community traffic safety program contract. I assume that's Mister Caps. Is that right?
Mm, thanks, sir.
Miss Sowell.
This is, this is, um, David's actually, the sheriff's department grant.
Come on. This is another claim.
State your name and city, normal, please.
This is, uh, this is the. Traffic overtime grant that we get each year from ADECA. It's administered by the, uh, South Alabama Highway Traffic Safety Office out of Enterprise. It pays for traffic overtime for DUI checkpoints, uh, on the county roads in the county. It reimburses a hundred percent of overtime plus fringe benefits. All it is, is just, uh, saying that you will agree to pay the officers, which we've been doing this for the past seven years, eight years. It's, it's just a continuing, we have to sign the paperwork every year.
I'll make motion and we approve this highway safety program.
That's second.
Just have to get the chairman to sign it and I have to give it back, get it back to, uh, Enterprise. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do I have, we have a motion in second to approve the contract for community traffic safety program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we want to consider the, uh, federal lands access program grant. Uh, Mister Caps?
Yes, sir. About a year ago, uh, I applied for a grant through the Eastern Federal Lands Access Program. Uh, I applied for six bridges that's located in the Connecticut National Forest. And just about a week or two ago, we were, uh, told that we were going to get it. It's, uh, it's two bridges. There's, uh, s- six bridges located on, uh, dirt roads and Connecticut National Forest, or county roads. And they're, uh, timber bridges. All of them are timber bridges, three ton weight limit. That's pretty much similar of all of them. And, uh, the grant is gonna buy all the materials for the bridges. There's two on Giles Road, two on Falco Road, and two on Sanders Road. And the grant money, the, the grant paid for the materials, preliminary engineering and construction engineering. The total cost is about one point four million dollars. The grant money we'll actually receive is about seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And it's, the agreement will be between, be between the federal lands, Aldott, and the county. And it's supposed to be a four-year, uh, period of time that we can do the bridges. Of course, we have a bridge crew that's capable of building these bridges. And, uh, we're fortunate to have that. Not, not many counties have that. So I just wanna bring that to the commission, let them know about, let y'all know about it.
The, uh, difference between the grant and the anticipated cost, the county will have to furnish the, uh.
The labor and the equipment, which would be an excavator and a crane.
That's great, that's great.
Which is about two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That'd be our match money, right?
Right, that's our match.
Okay. Well, that's where they do this at no cost except the labor. Sounds good.
Sound mighty good.
And this would be legal, precast bridges is legal for any loads and they have barrier rails and approach guard rail. That's better.
That's great.
Safe, best safety, you know, that you can get on a bridge.
Do I, do I have a motion that be enter a contract?
Well, just wait till we get it. I'm just announcing.
You just announced it.
Right. We're waiting on the contract, but the agreement. I just wanted.
We'll be meeting the tenth of March, you think?
Uh, hopefully we'll have it by then.
Next item is discuss private signs on the right of way.
Yeah, we have a problem in the county. I mean, it's not just one location, the entire county where there's some large signs that's being placed on the right of way. And these signs typically have like two posts, four by fours or larger, and, uh, big, usually advertising. And these are hazard. Somebody goes off the road and clips them, the whole thing could fly into the car. And, uh, I just want y'all to be aware of it, that we're gonna put notices on these signs, uh, tack one on them, a notice. Tell them to remove them from the right of way. If we don't have a result from ten days or two weeks, then we'll actually get a, a letter written to them and, you know, follow through to make sure they're moved.
When you say private, uh, signs, is that all private signs?
Yeah, any private signs. That's a hazard.
Are these permanent?
These are permanent, not these little.
They're yard sale and advertisements and, um.
Sure ain't the commissioners are going to run public office signs all the day.
No, I mean, there may be a one or two, but they're not, they're portable. They're gonna be moved. But these are like mounted in the ground, you know.
How, how are you gonna enforce it?
Uh, well, we're gonna put notices and if they don't, we'll, eventually we have to, we'll move them ourselves.
Do we have a policy in place to do that? And what the procedure is to notify people and how we carry it out?
Well, I'm, I'm notifying the note, I'm gonna notice, put a notice on the, on the, uh, sign and then. I mean, it's against the law, state law to put signs on it right away anyway, so. I'm just making aware in case y'all get phone calls that, you know, know what's going on.
Do people have adequate?
Take any action.
Right.
It ain't like going out there and doing something overnight.
No, no.
It takes several months, something to get moved from.
Well, I mean, you might get a phone call, John Doe, and just y'all be aware of it.
Okay.
And we do get written up on, uh, our road inspections when they grade our roads. If there's a encroachment, we get points deducted from our grades.
I, I know there's varying right of way widths.
That's correct.
How are you gonna be able to work? I mean, I'm sure a lot of them feel like they were off, but they may not be depending on the width of that right of way.
Right. Well, I'll have a, when we do the notice, we'll know the right of way and we'll put forty or thirty or whatever it is.
Okay, so that way they can.
Move them.
Move it according so they won't be, I just think that's a, unless people know what that right of way is at, at that particular side, it's gonna be hard for them to.
Yeah, we're gonna have that on the notice.
This, this time we'll take comments on the board.
Yeah, I, right now, I'm just hoping we don't have any bad weather and, you know, like we had the other night, and so. You know, I appreciate everybody gonna be on standby and we kinda had a little trial run the other night. We sure hope we don't have that again. All of our road departments and people that was out doing the work. We appreciate y'all, appreciate the MA and sheriff's department and everybody. We thought wasn't gonna be that much and all of a sudden it was a lot. And, uh, everybody just doing what they need to do and we, I can't say enough about what y'all done. Appreciate y'all.
I, I'm gonna give a shout out to the volunteer fire departments, cause they've really pitched in and, and made a big difference on getting these roads cleared and. They did a lot of it before the county workers could get there. Actually cleared away for the county workers to get there in a lot of areas and for the power company, you know. I wish the public could be conscious of the roadblock signs and to be aware that, that, uh, when you see the flashing lights and all that and people out there working, please slow down or avoid the area. Because they have some traffic jams the other night up in the, on the Lord Mill Road, people coming through there just wanna see what damage was done and actually impairing the work being done. So the public will be aware of that and kinda stay out there and let the people do the job. That's all I have.
Mister Thurman, you got anything?
No, sir.
You have more?
I don't have anything.
I'll just make one comment. There is another meeting at ten o'clock with the Chuck P, uh, organization to make a presentation here. They have requested that all the commissioners be here.
And have a check for each commissioner, too.
What, sir?
You have a check for each commissioner. No chairman will get the check.
You get a check and it says zero.
What's this all about?
We got a check.
You're just talking. That check makes you president. We are joking, calling. I miss jokes.
I'm signing. She's going around, sign it before you leave.
Okay, uh.
Sign it before you leave.
I need signatories on.
Won't you go ahead and love me?
Need signatories on that.
There's, there's paperwork up front that the commissioners need to sign. And then there's also the signing sheet for our solid waste management plan that everyone needs to sign before they leave.
Alright.
Okay.
You can get your face over that while we hear Bill.
What?
Those papers you wanna sign? Ain't that what you wanna sign?
Yeah, I love signs. Many carries don't want signs this year. Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.